Called to order, regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of Machesney Park, Illinois for Monday, April 18, 2016. Please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Heath Tippett from First Baptist Church of Machesney Park, and pledge of allegiance will be led by trustee Robin Snodgrass.
Let us pray. Father, we're so thankful that here in our small part of the world, you are aware of us. And Lord, as we see the devastation that's happened around the world in Ecuador and Japan, Father, we pray that we would look at our community, not just how we can better it, but, Father, how we can be ready to be neighbors to one another in moments of difficulty and moments of despair. Father, we just ask blessings on the leadership of our community. Father, we ask that you'd give us direction and guidance and help us to truly be neighbors to one another. We pray all in the name of your Son. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will a clerk take a roll call, please?
Mayor Bowlin.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
Thank you, Laurie. We have a quorum. Next is approval of minutes from April 4, 2016, board meeting, April 2, 2016 budget discussion, and April 4 budget hearing. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasurer's report. Tom Yell.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report reflects the total of all funds as of April 11 of $7,315,165.83. Also, in complying with our ordinance, we are providing a monthly pledge collateral report, and as of April 11, the village is holding fund in five financial institutions with FDIC covered. The total pledge collateral is currently 167 percent of the balance, which exceeds the minimum of 110 percent of the requirements. A detailed copy of the treasurer's report is available at the table at the back of the meeting.
Thank you, Tom. I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussions or changes? I hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The treasurer's report has been accepted. Next, we have communications. Laurie Mitchell.
Okay. First of all, Your Honor, there's a couple proclamations of you here in order. First this evening, we welcome Harlem Township Supervisor Terry Knight, who will be accepting the mayor's proclamation recognizing April 28 as Workers Memorial Day in Machesney Park. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Beck will be reading.
Whereas every year, more than 10,000 American workers are killed on the job, and whereas tens of thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas millions are injured, and whereas another 100,000 workers die from cancer, lung disease, and other diseases related to toxic chemical exposure at work, and whereas concerned Americans are determined to prevent these tragedies by organizing Workers Memorial Day on April 28 as a chosen day by the unions of the AFL-CIO as day to remember these victims of the workplace injuries and disease, renewing our efforts to seek stronger safety health protections, better standards and enforcement, and fair and just compensation, rededicating ourselves to improve safety and health in every American workplace. Now therefore I, Jerry D. Bowlin, Mayor of Machesney Park, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2016 as Workers Memorial Day in Machesney Park in recognition of workers killed, injured, and disabled on the job.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and making the proclamation, and the village definitely stands behind anything that we can do and help with keeping our workers safe out there. We don't need one more injured. We don't need one more death. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Committee of Workers Memorial, I'd like to thank you all, and I hope to see everybody there on the 28th, 5 o'clock, Z George Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And next, the mayor will be presenting a proclamation for the Great American Cleanup, which is April 30, 2016, to Anne Marie Santora from Keep Northern Illinois Beautiful. And trustee Johnson will read the proclamation.
Whereas Keep Northern Illinois Beautiful is a local nonprofit dedicated to preserving our local environment through education, community involvement, and public awareness, whereas the village of Machesney Park is proud of its natural resources in its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community through the actions of citizens, government, businesses, working together, and whereas on April 30, 2016, over 18,000 volunteers from neighborhood groups adopt a road program, and service organizations will gather to clean up and green up our community. Now therefore I, Jerry D. Bowlin, Mayor of the village of Machesney Park, do hereby proclaim April 30 to be Great American Cleanup Day in Machesney Park, and urge all citizens to join in cleanup projects throughout the village on April 30, 2016, to keep our community clean, green, and healthy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anne, for coming out tonight, and certainly each one of our responsibilities to take care of our immediate areas around our homes and our streets and so forth, with all the volunteers that come out for this to keep America beautiful, which is going to make our place better, better, and better.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate the opportunity to be here to thank you for helping us publicize, but the village of Machesney Park is also a longstanding funder and sponsor and partner in our programs, both financially as well as assisting us with when we're on site at Machesney Park Town Center for our collection drives throughout the year. And I did want to take this opportunity to report back in terms of stewardship of the funds that you entrust to us. Every year, our organization needs to raise in dollars about $300,000 to do our work to organize, equip, and publicize 11 programs that keep the community clean and green. And we do all these programs with just three and a half paid staff, but over approximately 1,700 volunteers annually, and they donate 11,000 hours. So thank you to the members of the public behind me, too, who probably come out, as well as leadership that I'm speaking to from the village, who also volunteer for us on a regular basis. Thirty percent of our funding does come from government municipalities, Winnebago County, and in the past, the state, but you can kind of guess what's happened to that funding. And another source, 18 percent of our funding comes because recycling is part of what we do, and so there is revenue associated with recycling. However, those prices have plummeted. So the support, the 52 percent that comes from individuals and the portion that comes from municipalities is really critical to us at this time. We do provide because of the volunteer labor and generous donations of supplies and media. We do give back to the community over a half million dollars a year, so we hope you'll continue to think it's a good investment. As the proclamation stated, Great American Cleanup is Saturday, April 30, and another big event is the medication collection that happens at the town center. It removes the first source of addiction, access to drugs in the home, and prevents accidental poisoning and death by overdose. So it's a real important program as well. Thank you and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Also this evening, to address the board prior to the vote on an agenda item, Charles Martin from Prairie Lane would like to speak on Resolution 26R-16.
We're just wondering, since Dorothea is a private road and the state laws, let me find it here, the law states that the duty to maintain a private road rests on the person or persons for whose benefit the road is established, not the municipality. But if a large portion of the public utilizes the road, or if a statute requires it designated as a public highway, then the duty falls on the public at large. We're not understanding why the taxpayers are on the hook to repair a private road or replace it. There is no easement up through there. It is on Neil Long's personal property. That's it.
Thank you very much. And that's my report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Laurie. Next, we have warrants. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration Finance Committee met and recommended warrants totaling $305,775.50, and I move for their passage.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or changes? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Laurie. The warrants has been approved. Next, we have administrative reports. At the last board meeting, I brought forth the list for the board committee appointments for chair and so forth. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Has been approved. This evening, I would like to recommend Ray Wetzel, that's W-E-T-Z-E-L, for reappointment for a five-year term to the Chicago Rockford International Airport Board beginning June 2016. I will be bringing that to the board on May 2 for approval. Ray has been representing the village for the past five years, and he's doing a fine job, and I will bring it to you May 2. Next, we have attorney Green.
No report, Your Honor.
Okay. Next, we have human resources and accounting manager, Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Included with your board packet was the quarterly investment report through March 31, 2016, as required by the village's investment policy. Total interest earned over the past quarter was $3,056, an increase of just over $500 from the prior quarter. Couple quick investment changes to note, the village did close its revolving loan fund checking account in March, no longer necessary since the fund was closed with the state. If in the future we do get funding, we'll just open up a new account. And then we did open a new money market account with Northwest Bank with a 0.45 percent interest rate for short-term holdings. Glad to see those interest rates are coming up a little bit. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go over them, otherwise that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have village engineer, Chris Dopkins.
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have public safety supervisor, Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The bi-monthly police report covers April 1 through the 14th. During that time, there were 791 calls for services in the village, 232 reports were taken, and 281 arrests. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Bushman. Next, we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Improvements and Safety Committee met this evening at 5:30, and we approved three resolutions, two of which will go to the board on May 2 and one that will go tonight, all with positive recommendations. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity to chair this committee, and I look forward to next year when we're changing it up.
Thank you, trustee Snodgrass. Is there any more reports? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration Finance Committee met and reviewed warrants and recommended for approval, and I also like to thank you for your conference meeting as chairman of the Administration Finance Committee for the last couple of years. I look forward to working with Aaron going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beck. Is there any more reports? Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The beautification committee met on April 13 last Wednesday, and we formed committee chairman and secretary, and we are going to meet again April 20 at 6 o'clock here at the village hall. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Are there any more reports? I see none. Next, we have the consent agenda. Will the staff please present all items under the consent agenda for the record?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have Item A, Ordinance 16-16, an ordinance granting a variance for a six-foot high fence in the front yard at 7303 Mildred Road, first reading. Item B, Ordinance 23-16, an ordinance granting a Class B liquor licenses to GPM Midwest 18 LLC at 8209 Burton Road, and increasing the number of Class B licenses to 14. This is the first reading. Item C, Ordinance 24-16, granting a Class A liquor licenses to Wild Rhubarb and Bakery Inc. at 8990 Old River Road, and decreasing the number of Class C licenses and increasing the number of Class A licenses to 10, first reading. Item D, Ordinance 14-16, amendment to chapters 14 and 30 of the Village Code of Ordinances Regarding Trash Collection Regulations, second reading. Item E, Ordinance 17-16, an ordinance providing for various amendments to the fiscal year 15-16 budget, second reading. Item F, Ordinance 18-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 29 of the Village Code Regarding Park Rules and Regulations, second reading. Item G, Resolution 18R-16, Resolution Regarding the Maintenance of Streets and Highways Utilizing State Motor Fuel Tax Funds for the Fiscal Year 16-17. Item H, Resolution 22R-16, authorizing transfer of a Class B liquor license to 7007 North Second Street, Suite D. Item I, Resolution 23R-16, authorizing a transfer of a Class B liquor license at 10125 North Second Street. And the last item, J, Resolution 24R-16, a resolution to award the publicly bid contract for the reconstruction of Scott Lane and Heron Drive to NTR Group in the amount of Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any items a board member would like removed from the consent agenda and considered I see none. The consent agenda is accepted as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, take roll call, please.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Laurie. The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have new business. Ordinance 22-16, adopt annual budget for year 2016, 2017, second reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The attached budget is for the fiscal years 2016, 2017, showing total expenditures of $6,299,700. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any discussion? Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to put amendment to the annual budget for the 2016, 2017 to add items that were removed on the April 2 budget meeting, and they are the HCC Summer Youth Program by $1,000, the Canip Christmas Tree Recycling Program, $750, Carlson Boys Clubs, $2,000, Young Heart, $2,500, Helping Hands Food Pantry, $750, GPS Food Pantry, $750, and Friends of Machesney, $1,000.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Yes, Your Honor.
I have a motion to amend the budget to accept the donation list as presented. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a second. Is there any discussions?
For the record, for the minutes, can we identify the line items actually of the budget that will be changed by this amendment?
So it'd be adding $12,000.
$750.
$750 to line item 00-04-913-10. GL description is donations. And then the offsetting would be against operating transfers for the CIP Fund 18, which would then keep the budget balanced.
Okay, thank you. I just need to identify those for the ordinance itself.
Thank you.
Trustee Wilson.
We've spent a great deal of time on this. I'm disappointed that this is happening here this late in the game on a second reading. I don't feel comfortable, as a trustee, spending our taxpayers' money on programs that are nonprofits that they might not agree to, and we felt strongly about this the whole time through, and again, I just can't believe we come to this second final reading, and we're now just putting this in here.
Trustee Kidd.
I think it's important that if we have $25,000 to give to the Rockford Park District, I think it's important that we support our local charities, the Boys and Girls Club, the Northern Illinois Food Pantry, and the rest of our local charities. I think we need to take care of the family first and our friends second. Thank you.
Trustee Bailey.
Thank you. As discussed before, you can do that with your time and your own money, not the taxpayers' monies. Thank you.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I stated before, I was, I agreed with the fact that many of the people that I spoke with do not believe, since the state owes us money, that we should be funding the not-for-profits and actually, especially those that aren't reporting to us and actually requesting funds. That being said, it was a huge disappointment for me on April 4 when the cost of living increase was surprisingly brought before the board and a 1 percent was given. As we discussed at several board retreats, we have an amazing staff. We do. That's never been an issue, that work very hard, and as a board, we approved merit raises as our administrator sees fit. In addition, our community as a whole, we do not have folks getting large raises. This week Chrysler and many of the companies associated with Chrysler are all laid off, and they're not sure what the future holds with cars changing. Winnebago County Health Department, which I told you I met with today, has implemented furlough days for which they are not getting paid. I do not believe, in addition, in meeting with our mayor, that it is our mayor's job to go out and fundraise. I appreciate his efforts on behalf of the food pantries that he was able to raise fund for, but many of these not-for-profit organizations are going to need us this year now more than ever, and since we do have the funds for the COLA, the cost of living increase, and since the state only owes us actually now, I guess, $200,000 for the boat ramp, our staff and some of the board, since our staff and some of the board believe we are doing great financially, and after speaking again with many of the residents that I spoke to before, I have to agree that we do need to fund these groups who ask for help, especially in the areas that help our residents. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been a supporter of funding these not-for-profits and groups. There are people in our community that are in need right now, and I have no trouble going to any constituents of my district and explaining to them that the amount of money that we're talking about here is less than 1/10 of 1 percent of this annual budget. So this team, I'm going to take in support of putting these back into the budget. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? I would like to say that I also agree with trustee Wilson's comment. We have spent a lot of time on this as a board. We even had a special meeting on Saturday to discuss these things, and here we are again at second reading, going over it again. I'm very disappointed for that. Again, and I like trustee Bailey's comment, that we as individuals, and I won't ask you individually, how much money have you gave to these organizations, and I really don't care, but you got to ask yourself that, because this is taxpayers' money that we are taking and handing out to nonprofit organizations that has their own board and has their own agendas, and yet they refuse to address their money issues and come to my board wanting the money, and some of those have not even asked for it. So if our problem is the 1 percent, I'd suggest we address that on its own bias and not attack it with what we're doing here tonight. So I will not vote to approve this, I can tell you that right now. Any more comments? I hear none. I have a motion and a second to amend to accept the donation list into the 2016-17 budget. Will a clerk take roll call?
Trustee Bailey.
Nay.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Nay.
Mayor Bowlin.
Nay.
Four ayes, three nays.
The amendment that the motion was made to accept has been approved. Now we go back to the motion to approve Ordinance 22-16, adopt annual budget year 2016-17, second reading, as amended. Is there any discussion? I will make one comment. I will seriously consider vetoing this. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays to approve the budget as amended.
Next, we have Resolution 19R-16, authorize police contract. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're asking for approval tonight from you for our intergovernmental cooperation agreement for police services with the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department, beginning fiscal year May 1 and extending for 12 months. That includes 29 sworn officers, one secretary, and the amount of the contract, bear with me, is $3,472,205. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tim. Is there any discussion? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Nay.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
Resolution 19R-16 has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution 26R-16 regarding Rock River Water Reclamation District Perry Dorothea Sewer Extension. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Staff report, please.
As a result of a public informational meeting held by the Rock River Water Reclamation District regarding this project, the Dorothea Sewer Extension, we heard numerous comments from the property owners along those two roadways, and did resolve at that meeting to survey them through the mail to determine whether or not
meeting to, uh, survey them through the mail to determine whether or not there was interest in, uh, on their part in proceeding with the, uh, extension of sewer. Uh, we did that, we completed the survey, we had 15 responses in opposition and six in favor, so we've provided you tonight with a resolution, uh, which resolves that the village president is authorized to execute a letter and send to the Rock River Water Reclamation District, communicating the village's desire to terminate the Prairie Lane and Dorothea Avenue sanitary sewer improvement project. We do realize that, um, our recommendation to the district is advisory, uh, they can do with it what they choose, um, but at this time, we would ask for your support and approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Tim, is there any discussion? Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor, I just want to thank the staff for taking the time to do this survey and giving us the results.
Is there any more discussion? Trustee Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I too would like to thank the staff for sending out the letter, and this and that is very informative, thank you again.
Is there any more discussion? I see none, would a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Nay.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
Resolution 26-R-16 has been adopted. Next is public comment, is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment? I see none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.